I'm activating the YouTube channel right now. It's starting to load. So whenever it hits seven o'clock and you're ready, Mr. Owens, you can take it away. Right now, we're live.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, April 21st. Roll call, please.
Commission Member Evans.
Present.
Commission Member Silva.
Present.
Commission Member La Micah.
Present.
Commission Member Wen. I didn't hear you, but I see you. Okay. There we go. Vice Chair Spalletta.
Present.
Chair Owens. Oh, I'm sorry. And Commissioner Dodson, I apologize. For the record, we have a quorum. Mr. Owens, I think you're muted.
Okay. I'm having trouble. I'm having trouble. Here it comes now. Very good. Okay. Review of agenda items. Has any item arose enough after the 72-hour post-line? This is the time in the meeting where we'll take a vote, two to three majority vote if anything's come up.
One thing, the minutes were not included in the packet, so if we can continue those to the next meeting, that would be appreciated.
Very good. We can go ahead and run the minutes from from April 1st, 2020. Is that the ones you're talking about?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move those to the next meeting, please?
All right, so move.
Okay, we've got a second. All in favor? I seeing no opposed, minutes are approved. Our, our next item on the, on the agenda is the Seaside Minister of Code Amendment SMA 20-02. The city code amendment is proposing the text amendment to the code Municipal Code Charter 1752, 1798, and 1740. And one other one. And table two, the amendment would repeal the specific standards for mechanical and electronic games. Staff?
Good evening, commissioners. What we're looking at tonight is Municipal Code Amendment 20-02. Next slide, please. So 1752, 140, we're proposing to repeal that. What is in that section? Is the regulations for mechanical and electronic games and game centers. And then, as typically happens with code amendments, when you touch one thing, you end up needing to do amendments to other sections. So 1798, where the definitions are located, is where we have to put the definitions of mechanical and electronic games and game centers in because those are currently located in the section that we're proposing to repeal. And then finally, in the permitted use table, we're proposing to change those game centers from requiring a use permit to being permitted outright in the CMX, CC, and CRG zones. So in the past year, we've seen two of these game centers come through. One is Lynn's Arcade, which is located in the shopping center on Fremont and Echo. And the other one is in the building 630 Broadway, I believe, Thrive Youth Sports. I checked in with the police to see whether or not youth truancy, which was a finding that
We lost you. We lost you. Leslie, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I think her connection cut out. Beth, are you still here?
I am.
Okay, sorry, we missed you for a second. You cut out right when you talked about police.
Ah, I contacted the Seaside Police Department and they said that youth truancy is not an issue in Seaside. To say not at all might be an overstatement, but they just said it wasn't something that they encountered that often. And that was one of the review components, which we'll get into in a second for these permits. And also no consequences to public health, safety, and welfare of the city. The two game centers that we permitted in the past year, one of them went through a use permit. And then Thrive Youth Sports, which is located in West Broadway, specific plan area, just had to get a minor use permit. Next slide. So the background on this, 1982, almost 40 years ago, the city council was hit with this cultural phenomenon of arcades popping up all over the city, whether it be an arcade center or even owner of like a liquor store, a convenience store, throwing one in the back corner. And at that time, you had kids showing up in these crazy clothes and just staring at these games. And it was kind of odd. I'm sure there were other things that were of more serious concern at that time that the code amendment that was passed, which you have as an attachment, was done with the aim of preserving the public health, safety, and welfare of the city of Seaside. Next slide. So 1752 regulates the location, positioning, noise, security, hours of operation. And then there's regulations around admittance of individuals under 18 years of age. And regarding those specific regulations, we have some of those reiterated and covered in essence in other code sections. Curfew for minors is covered in 9.24, noise regulations in 9.12, and public nuisances in 8.30. And with the aim of what you're probably going to see coming up in a handful of months with the proposed changes to the form-based code, we're looking at making it easier for businesses, small businesses, to be able to establish themselves in Seaside, not have too much review associated with them, especially for things that, over the years, have proven maybe to be not as much of a concern or issue that they had in the past. Next slide. So this is the recommendation. I'm not going to read it because one of you will probably read through it, depending on what we settle on tonight regarding your decision regarding these amendments. But again, it's something that you can definitely expect to see with the form-based code is loosening of some regulations for certain uses. And we might come forward with a few more amendments, dependent on how long the form-based code takes to get to the final stages. If other uses come up that are more antiquated than relevant today. That concludes my presentation.
Very good. We will open it up for public comment at this time. Anybody wishing to Can you hear me? Okay, anybody wishing to speak on this can do so through email through Leslie at this point. Leslie, do we have anything?
I have not received anything.
Okay, we'll hold it open just for a few, few minutes because I just closed on YouTube. So I don't want to cut somebody off if they're trying to get on. Okay, it's been 60 seconds. Do we want to move it to planning commissioners? Bring it back to the commission? Mr. Silva, would you like to start?
I'm just gonna laugh that I guess we get to feel old now because I was 13 in 1982 when those games came out. And I used to be one of those kids, but I wasn't a truant, so.
So you're good with it? Very good. Next, anybody wishing to speak on it?
Yeah, I would say this code's probably about 15 years out of date, so it's about time to change it, get rid of it.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Dodson?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. La Micah? Anything from Mr. La Micah?
No, nothing for me. Nothing. It's outdated.
Very good, Mr. Evans?
I'm in agreement with everybody else, but I was a truant.
I see no problem with it myself.
Okay, we're missing Gotcha. Just so that you know, Leslie, this roll call did not, that I'm seeing that I have on, from the city, does not have Danny on there?
Yes, we, I apologize to him earlier this week. I, I did make that mistake, but we did do formal roll call with him. He has been approved by the city council, so he can take action this evening, and he is present.
Very good. Danny, would you like to speak up on this matter?
Well, I support. I'm all good with it.
Very good, then. Yes, unfortunately, like the rest of you, see, I graduated in 73, and I know why they close those things down. We had a hard time staying out of there when we were younger. But I don't think we have that problem anymore. So can we get a motion from one of the commissioners on this item?
I move to repeal SMA. I don't have the number in front of me.
20-02?
20-02.
Yes. Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor? I seeing no opposed, so passed. An appeal can be submitted in writing within seven calendar days from the date of this meeting. It will state the pertinent facts and be have the required filing fees with it. Thank you.
Well done on that.
Sorry, I couldn't remember it all. Okay, we're going to move on to use permit application, UP. My bad. Hold on. Aren't we doing the gasoline, right?
Yes, that is correct.
One second, please. My mini is not cooperating. I'm wondering if I've got it because I got the electronic, but I don't see the other one. What is the number on it, Leslie?
No, one second. Use permit application, UP 20-02, and Seaside Municipal Code Amendment 20 SMA-20-01.
Now, is that the gasoline one?
Yes.
Okay, can we hear from staff on that item, please? I don't have it on mine for some reason.
Okay, good evening, commission. In the application, this is for, this project includes a code amendment and a use permit. And then again, this is for a Costco service, service station, gas station. Next slide, please. So again, the purpose, we have, we, we have three items that are considered as part of this application. There is under CEQA, there's been a mitigated negative declaration prepared for the evaluation of the CEQA aspect of the project. There are text amendments to Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code and a conditional use permit. Projects that involve application requiring multiple applications that include legislative actions pulls all the items to the authority of the city council. So in this case, the legislative item are the text amendments. So the actions of the commission this evening will serve as a recommendation on all three actions to the city council for when they consider the text amendment for the project. Next slide, please. So background, we do have us, the next slides, I have an aerial photo, which has a more of a blown-up view of the site. And then we have a larger regional location map. But what I want to set the context, the project site is at the north end of the auto center, which was established in the late, in the late 60s, early 70s, in terms of its full development. And again, this was identified as auto dealerships, and there is some auto service that is within the auto center. Sullivan's Tires, and then you have an auto body shop that's on the south end as part of the Cardinelli dealership currently. There was an auto center renovation that did occur in 2006. And this is where the roadway for the auto center was redesigned, realigned within the auto center, eliminated some of the frontage areas that were part of a circular pattern around each dealership. And the road, particularly of this site, as it moved north, it then tied into Tioga Avenue, which the project site will have access from, and we'll go over that with the upcoming site plans. And there are some unutilized parcels now that have been created on the north end with this roadway improvement. So site characteristics, the site itself was developed previously with a Wester Dodge dealership, which was abolished in 2005. The site is currently an automotive retail sales lot for Cypress Coast Ford. And again, it occurred in 2006 with the auto center renovation. On the zoning code, the zoning code standards were adopted in 2006 whereby we have the service station standards that are under Section 1752210. And these were adopted as part of the overall update to the zoning code. And as we get into the text amendments, we'll kind of give an analysis of why the current text amendments do coordinate and are consistent with the zoning and general plan. The general plan for the site is a large, is regional commercial, which is classified for our large-scale developments, and that's the entire auto center. And again, under the California Environment Quality Act, we, the city did process and notice some intent to issue a mitigative negative declaration, which was included as an exhibit to the staff report and also as an attachment, a web link for the public. Next slide, please. So the project site, this is, as you can see, on the blown-up view on the right corner, this is at the north end of the auto center. On aerial photo next, I will provide you with analysis what the adjoining lot areas are. The dealerships that are just to the south of the site are the Cypress Coast Ford and the BMW dealership. Next slide, please. Okay. So the red area, this is a .98, .0, .98 acre site. This skin was part of what was Wester Dodge dealership. You can see the auto center parkway that is to the south. That is a roadway that was created as part of the auto center renovation. There is a continued access easement that runs along the, the right side of the property, which is to the east. Further to the east of that is the BMW dealership. Extending to the corner of Fremont and Auto Center Parkway. We have a hotel development that has located two hotel developments there. Across the way, we have the Honda dealership at the corner that would be at the northwest corner of Del Monte. And then there's the BMW auto service repair. Again, across the street, we have the, an auto body shop. And then there's a vacant lot being used for the auto center for current inventory of cars and the Tesla dealership. There's a Porsche dealership that is down on the lower south corner of Tioga. And then, of course, the Costco gas, the Costco wholesale at 810 Tioga, further to the west. Next slide, please. Well, with the text amendments that are, the first text amendment that was necessary for the project is to 17.1403OB, this is the table for allowed land uses. Currently, in the automotive retail district, new car sales and autumn and accessory service repair are allowed with a use permit. In this case, for us to proceed with the application, the city's land use table would be updated to include a service station with a use permit requirement, which is being processed concurrently with the use permit that we will go into further this evening. Next slide, please. So the second text amendment, this is being performed for the limitation locations within this section of the code. As you can see in the bold text, black, this is the current text of the code, which states a service station should not be closer than 500 feet to another service station, except where both are at the same street intersection. But city staff has added, in this case, or separated by a four-lane arterial, arterial roadway. In this case, the nearest gas station to the site would be the Rod and Ross Station. And that's located approximately about 450 feet to the east of the site. And that is at the southeast corner of Fremont Boulevard and LaSalle Avenue. Next slide, please. The next text amendment, this would be for vehicle parking. And there was the, the bold text provides the basic standards of not parking on sidewalks, parkways, driveways, alleys, or having cars parked on the premises for the purpose of sale. What we've added in the red, underlined text that would be added to the code is offshoot parking for a service station with no onsite cashier, onsite convenience store, slash vending machines, or onsite vehicle services shall be, shall be determined by use permit approval. So we're finding that your prior gas stations that existed in the 70s and 80s, which had a service aspect associated with it, and some that have been converted into convenience stores, though this type of gas station proposed will be a wholesale customer station only. It will be by membership. So there will not be any of the functions and services that are necessary when you have the other services associated with typical gas stations, service stations. Next slide, please. So on the next part of the amendment, public restrooms were identified. And in the cases where we have the other services, where people are staying longer at the, at the site, staff would identify that public restrooms probably are necessary. In this case, what was added to the facility operating standards, a site that has no onsite cashier, convenience store, vending, or other services, that the, a restroom should not be required. Next slide, please. So what we've identified in the staff report is that we have some consistency aspects of the general plan. And on the first land use element, LU1, this is to encourage regional commercial visitor-serving development that will enhance the identity of Seaside and attract visitors to the community. City staff finds that this project, that this text amendment is consistent, and that the text amendments will provide complementary and compatible infill development within an existing regional commercial center. The site is also in an urbanized area of the city, and that the area would continue to complement the other retail aspects that surround the auto center as well. The second land use element, we looked at goal LU2. And in this case, there's a policy that states to continue with revitalization of the auto center. And this project would consist of a development of a service station that would be compatible with auto center and other surrounding land uses by maintaining and diversifying the focused auto retail services of the auto center. The property also has become kind of an underutilized site in that it's a use, it's a sales lot, which is separated by the roadway and from the dealership site that is further to the south. The next goal we looked at was land use goal LU4. And in this case, there's a policy require that all new development is compatible with surrounding uses, the site, and available infrastructure. This case, we have a roadway improvement that are, the roadway access that would be accessible for the site. We will show you within the site plan that the vehicle circulation and stacking and queuing is able to accommodate the site, given even a bit where 100% occupied. So we find that there's also existing infrastructure that's also available to facilitate this development as well. The next is goal land use LU8.1. And in this, there's a policy ensure that developers provide stormwater retention, detention facilities, best management practices. This case, the project will retain all stormwater and runoff onsite through swales and underground interceptors. On ED, this is economic development ED-4. There's policy encourages the development of retail establishments that will reduce leakage of resident spending. Staff finds the proposed project would involve, would provide an additional revenue source within an infill site to capitalize on both local and visitor-serving customers to enhance city's long-term revenue. And then the last general plan goal we identified was economic development goal ED-5. And there's, there's a policy to attract and support commercial and employment-generating development that is consistent with the general plan and city ordinances. The test amendments will enable and support the traction of a regional certain commercial use, provide an enhanced revenue source, and again, encourage the redevelopment of underutilized commercial properties, and also help to enhance the values and aspects of other surrounding properties that could benefit from the additional traffic and source of persons coming to the city at this location to frequent other businesses. Next slide, please. So the project description, again, the site is .98 acre infill site, and I have the site plan to go in next. There will be 24 pumps accessed by Costco members only. There is a canopy of about 6,900 square feet that will identify where the canopy exists on the site. There's underground storage tanks, which would be on the north side, controller building to contain aspects associated with the operation of the underground tanks. Again, there's no onsite cashier, auto service, or public bathrooms. There will be a landscape plan that will be provided on site and access drives. Next slide, please. So I'll give you a brief overview because the applicant will be coming next. And I want them to give you more of the indication of how this was selected and how they came up with this particular site plan. But to the, to the south is the mall, and so there's entrance to the site off Del Monte. There's also the entrance into the mall from Geary Plaza. So if you're on Fremont Boulevard, you'd be able to access the interior mall from Geary Plaza, as well as from Hightower, that's further to the south. So you can see that there is a driveway at the southeast corner. And this driveway will have two driveway entrances to allow people to exit the site. That going in a dedicated right turn and those going, making a left. There's the entrance that would come along the, the easement that would access the property between the dealership of BMW and the project site. They would enter the site and there for the, for the, on that north end. And it would circle back toward the canopy areas in the middle. There would be 12 pumps with dual pumps on, on each dispenser. The, to the north, you can see that that's the underground storage tanks that would be located. And there would be 240,000 gallon unleaded, one premium, and an additive tank. Next slide, please. The drainage plan, this would just demonstrate in terms of what the onsite retention will be required. They're showing an area at the right, at the left bottom corner that would have a swale area for where landscaped area would be provided, as well as they would be identifying how the installation of the underground interceptors would be working on site. Next slide, please. Here's a rendering. This is a view looking from the interior of the right-of-way. That would be down at the southeast corner, and that would be looking toward the Tesla or that vacant lot between the auto body shop and Tesla. And again, this would be a typical Costco color of beige, and there would be a gray color or an off, maybe a lighter beige that would be for the support posts. Next slide, please. So the city has prepared a initial study that it gave a nego declaration. So in the initial study, all of the checklist factors that were identified, except for cultural noise and transportation, were deemed to have no impact. The three mitigation measures that were identified in the report were for cultural. And this is to, currently in the Seaside general plan, there has been no archaeological or other sensitive aspects associated with the urbanized area of this location of the community. But we do as a standard condition put in that in the event that there's any cultural findings or anything of significance that's found during excavation or grading, that that development would have to stop and that the artifact or whatever sensitive cultural source that would be identified would be preserved and maintained prior to the construction to continue. There was noise report that was included in the initial study. And this was basically, we had the existing motels that are further to the north. The report identified that there would be no significant impacts of the operation of the service station on Um, the report identified that there would be no significant impacts of the operation of the service station on these uses. However, construction noise will have a temporary short-term impact. And we've identified conditions that the project would have to maintain during the construction process to minimize, mitigate noise on those uses. In the transportation section, um, the applicant's trafficking, um, uh, team is available to answer further questions. Um, but there was a transportation impact assessment that was prepared for the project that assessed the adjoining intersections. And it was determined that the project itself would not create any significant impact on those intersections that would reduce the, the existing service in the LOS A and B. Um, as part of the initial study, in mitigative negative declaration, there's a mitigation monitoring program that was included as attachment six to the staff report. And that is included as part of the, um, certification of the initial study. Uh, next slide, please. So city staff, um, in the recommendation has, um, for the motion for the commission to consider would be, there's three actions, there's attachment one, which is the mitigative negative declaration, attachment two, which is the text amendment resolution, and attachment three, which is the conditional use permit resolution. Um, that will conclude staff's presentation. Is there any questions for staff before we allow the applicant to give you more information and details, the specifics of the, um, project?
Okay. Am I on right now? Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, we'll, we'll start with Mr. Evans. Do you have any questions for staff?
For staff, no.
Okay. We'll move right down on the line. One second here. Mr. Silva, anything?
So just one question, and perhaps the applicant could explain it too. I just noticed that I think it's the southwest corner of the canopy is extremely close to the property line or on the property line. Do we have any issue with building setbacks, um, or anything relating to that?
There is a zero setback. So there would not be a setback for that, for the construction of that, of that open air canopy.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Silva? Okay, uh, Mr. Dodson?
Um, yeah, one question, um, this is a very big gas station, probably bigger than anything else we have in the city. In the transportation report, which I don't have in front of me, what was the estimate of the uh, number of cars at peak times that would be put onto Auto Mall Parkway and then obviously onto the major iris from there?
Um, staff will allow the applicant, when they give the presentation, they would be able to give you information related to that.
Okay.
Is that it, Mr. Dodson?
Yeah.
Mr. Spalletta?
I'd just like to hear from the applicant.
Okay, anything for staff, Mr. La Micah?
I just have one, I don't know if for staff or the applicant, but since there are not going to be any restroom stairs, this is the, in the paperwork, the station will, um, be periodically manned by at least one Costco employee who will oversee the day-to-day operations of the pumps, traffic circulation, and trash pickup. So how long would that employee stay at the, um, refueling station?
Again, we'll allow the applicant to provide you information related to the operations of the staff that would be periodically manned in the site.
Okay, uh, Mr. Han, Danny, anything to say?
Nothing, nothing at all.
Okay, one question I have, uh, um, Rick, is do the city have any services underneath that land when they're going to dig for those big tanks? Is, is that any of the infrastructure of ours that are underneath that, or is it all clear?
That would be, well, that was previously demolished from the Wester Dodge, so that would be clear. There would be, and any, um, existing, um, gas lines and water lines would be marked prior to any grading or further construction of the site.
And there's no storm drains running through there tying into the central city. Something that they'll have to basically bag up with some type of a, um, uh, an apparatus to hold any crud from going down in our storm system.
In this case, they would be required, in this case, they're required to retain their stormwater onsite.
Right, but we don't have any stormwater that runs through that or, and where does the power run for the traffic lights that are right there at the corner? They don't run through that property at all?
Uh, no, they would not.
Okay, that's good. Okay, so that's it for, for staff. We can hear from the applicant now?
Good evening, members of the commission. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
My name's Sean Anderson from Bardhausen Engineers out of Seattle, Washington. And I'll be speaking as the applicant on behalf of the project, although we do have our project team present here tonight, um, including our traffic engineer, so as we get into questions, if any are really specific, then we can direct it to the correct person or the appropriate person. I thought I would start by, um, giving a little bit of a presentation to go through, um, the concept behind the facility and get into a little bit more detail about the layout we chose and the operations to, um, just get everybody orientated with Costco fuel facility. But before we do that, um, I'd first like to just, uh, start by saying that this facility is a new service existing warehouse in San City that Costco has been, um, highly anticipating for some time. Uh, there's been a lot of work that has gone into searching for a site that would work for a facility that's nearby. And frankly, the options were quite limited, so for this site to become available is uh, just really great for Costco and for their ability to bring, um, gas to their member within the peninsula, um, region. Um, the design as, uh, or perhaps we can go to slide number twelve, which is the site plans, um, slide. I'll just wait for this to come up, it'll make it easier to.
It's not the site plan.
Yeah, slide number twelve, I believe is the site plan.
Sorry, one second, it's not responding, I apologize.
That's okay, I can get started in the description while that's being loaded up, but, um, as mentioned, uh, the facility is what we call a three-by-four layout. There's three aisles, four dispensers, um, each, for a total of twelve dispensers or twenty pumps. The, uh, tank field, there we go. Um, the tank field is located along the northern property boundary, um, interior from either the street. It is, and, um, the orientation of this layout has been very carefully thought through to try and maximize, uh, storage of vehicles onsite and, uh, get as efficient of a flow of vehicles through the site as possible. And the way it works is, um, the, uh, majority of vehicles will be drawn in off of, uh, the mall or auto center that will, um, enter the site, uh, using the lane striping provided along the plan east side of the, um, facility. They'll enter into those two queuing lanes, which, uh, will wrap up around towards Del Monte and then, uh, lead vehicles into the queuing area. And, um, all of this will occur under one-way flow of vehicles. Um, this is a standard, uh, design for all Costco gas stations. There's only one way to go through the site, um, to avoid any conflicts of vehicles and, uh, uh, basically to try to maximize the efficiency of vehicles flowing through the site. Uh, each of the dispensers that should be noticed, noted is also, um, spaced approximately twenty-eight feet, which, uh, is additional space from, um, so around the middle, a gas station, which is designed to allow vehicles to be able to comfortably get into some of those middle dispenser uh, positions without having to, um, back in or do any Austin power type maneuvers. Um, you'll also see up along the northern property boundary where the, I identified the underground storage tanks, there's a striped-out area, which is a dedicated, um, area for the fuel trucks to sit and be able to make their deliveries without disrupting the flow of queuing or, um, vehicles moving through the site. And then lastly, there's, um, an exit point along Del Monte, which will be curbed, um, to allow only rideouts and the intent for that exit point is, um, primarily for fuel trucks to be able to exit out comfortably onto, uh, Del Monte Boulevard, but also, um, to also serve secondarily as a bailout lane for anyone who might have gotten into queue and then changed their mind for whatever reason. Um, I'm sorry, I was going to check my notes and give anything here. Operationally, the facility is open to Costco members only. Um, so again, the, uh, primary base will be Costco members from, um, not only with the city of, uh, Seaside, but broadly within the, um, peninsula region and then, um, any of those who just happen to be passing through. Uh, the idea of, uh, the facility is not to operate at twenty-four hours. There will be, um, uh, a limit on the hours, uh, that it will operate. They won't be exactly the same as the warehouse. Um, they'll be open a little bit earlier in the morning, a little bit later to allow, uh, members to, um, fuel during some non-peak times and also onsite, they'll sell gas only, no other services. So there won't be any other, um, retail function to the site other than for members to pull in, fuel up, and then be on their way. Again, this is all in an effort to maintain flow of, um, member feeling on the site. Uh, with regards to the site or the, um, facility itself, um, these will just kind of be some final notes to, um, get everybody acquainted with the Costco fuel facility. This, the fuel system, uh, is very state-of-the-art. Um, it's, uh, with a system designed that, uh, meets all state water board requirements for underground storage of fuel and all air quality or, um, California Air Resource Board, uh, requirements for, um, emissions and vapor control. Um, some areas that are notable are that all the tank systems, uh, piping, USTs, everything. Uh, USTs are underground storage tanks, um, just for, uh, for note, are all double-walled fiberglass with, uh, multiple redundancies for, uh, both monitoring and containment. In California, generally, the state standards, uh, hold fuel stations, um, to standard that's basically higher than anywhere uh, in the nation, and Costco has always been on the leading edge of providing the correct technology to make those, uh, standards. Um, and then as far as vapor control, same thing, uh, vapor control technology to maximize the efficiency of, uh, of vapor control, uh, again, in alignment with the Air Resource Board requirements. Um, lastly, and this will go to, uh, Commissioner, um, I'm sorry, uh, Micah's, uh, question about, um, or the onsite employees. Uh, there are trained employees that will be onsite at all times, uh, during the operation of the fuel facility. Um, their role is pretty broad. Um, the, the primary function is to assist members, uh, where necessary, but then also to, um, provide any emergency responses necessary or spill response, uh, and act any procedures as necessary. They also, uh, help assist during, uh, fuel deliveries. Um, generally maintain the site, do, uh, equipment checks throughout the day to make sure everything's operating correctly. Uh, and, um, there are always, um, a number of trained employees, uh, on shift throughout the day. So there's regular rotations of, uh, of employees out to the site. There's also supervisor, supervising employees within the warehouse, uh, who are, are trained to, um, relieve or to, um, rotate out employees as necessary. So, um, for regularly scheduled breaks or, um, restroom breaks or anything um, that, that is needed for the employee. Uh, but there's always, uh, plenty of staff available, um, trained staff, and, uh, there's a, a regular procedure for making sure that they're getting the rest they need. So, um, that covers, uh, some of the design philosophy of this particular site. Uh, some of the important, uh, uh, operational aspects of the facility, as well as some of the more specific design aspects. Um, I hope this helps answer some of the questions you might have already had, but at this point, we'll hand it back over to the commission to, I guess, elaborate on any questions you might have.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm still interested, uh, you know, Del Monte gets pretty crowded around five, five-thirty at night. I'm just, again, I'm wondering how many additional cars do we expect to be dumping onto Del Monte around then?
Um, for that question, I might, uh, hand that and any other, uh, traffic-related questions to Amy Lopez, who is our traffic engineer on the project.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, commissioners, this is Amy Lopez with Kittleson and Associates. I'm happy to answer the commissioner's question. Um, what we expect to see when, if the fuel station is constructed is in the morning, I would expect to see, uh, three hundred and seventeen, to be precise, um, trips traveling along Del Monte. So thinking about northbound, southbound splits, it's a little, a little bit more on the southbound. We've got about a hundred and seventy-eight coming south and one hundred and thirty-nine trips going north. The numbers are a little bit lower in the evening, we're looking at closer to two hundred and sixty trips total being added during the PM peak hour. Um, so it's about, and then this, the north-south split is in the reverse, so one-twenty going south and about a hundred and forty going north.
Is that good enough for you, Mr. Dodson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, next, we'll go with, um, Commissioner Silva. Any questions for the applicant?
No further questions for me.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, La Micah? Any questions?
No, mine was answered, thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, this, this question might be for Amy. Um, on the mitigation measures, uh, on our packet, it's the very, very end, it's seventy-nine. Um, basically, it's, it acknowledges that there's going to be a significant impact both at the, uh, Highway One and, uh, Del Monte Fremont intersection, and then obviously at Canyon Del Ray. Are you aware of whatever the, uh, I mean, basically, it sounds like, uh, Costco will pay a fee into whatever those ultimate widening projects are. Uh, any idea on when that will occur, if ever? And also what kind of an impact it will have on the numbers that you, you gave to Commissioner Dodson?
Sure, thank you for the question. Um, answering the first part with regard to the fee that would be paid and the, and the widening of, of State Route One. This is a project that TMC, the, the countywide transportation agency already has planned. This is a, a planned improvement, and the fee would be part of their, um, existing impact fee program for which they collect fees from various projects throughout the county for the purpose of funding improvements that they've already identified and planned. So to the second part, or the second part of your question regarding the timing of that, um, that's not something I'm able to speak to, uh, seeing as it's a, a matter of TMC's decision-making and the way they prioritize the various projects that they fund and construct. And to your third question, maybe you can clarify for me what you, what you're interested in with regard to the mitigation and, uh, and the traffic counts that I was sharing. I'm not su, I misunderstood your question, if you could clarify for me.
It probably wasn't well-stated. Mostly, I'm just concerned about the fact that the, earlier in the, in the report, it talks about that there would be significant numbers of trips coming from the freeway and from Canyon Del Ray to the station. And, um, you know, that kind of goes to Commissioner Dodson's question of how many trips are coming in and out. So until that, till that's actually done, at this point, really haven't solved the problem. We've just contributed to their ultimate, uh, widening of that, if I understand it right. And I was just curious if you knew what that widening would do to your numbers, if at all?
To the analysis numbers, not, not a To the analysis numbers, not not affecting the traffic volume numbers, am I, you're interested in what it means for the analysis? Or rather, the operations?
Well, the immediate operation is that the mitigation measure isn't gonna do anything for these trips coming back and forth. So it sounds like you're comfortable that the number of trips that are being added is not gonna put undue stress on Fremont.
For the local street, that is what I have found with the analysis, yes, that the. Street um would continue to operate well within the city's standard.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Evans? Very good. Okay, we'll move to Mr. Hun. Danny, do you have anything?
Uh, no question.
Okay, uh, Michael?
I shouldn't answer.
Okay, I have a couple, oh, do you have some questions, Mike?
No.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for um the representative for Costco. Are you there?
Sean Anderson here.
Hi, Sean, this is John Owens from the Planning Commission. One of my things is, is there going to be entrance off of Del Monte straight into the gas station? Or is it going to go to the stoplight, turn into the auto center and then into the gas station?
Correct, the um primary flow of members is anticipated to uh come in off of auto center, whether it be. Southbound from Del Monte or or northbound and um the only access onto Del Monte will be a ride out only.
And you've got ways that'll stop people from coming in through that direction?
Correct, the um exit out will be curbed, uh so it would make it um. Very difficult to make a an entrance in and have to be some weird kind of U-turn hopping curves and then. There won't be, there's no uh left turn pocket at that point of this of Del Monte that would encourage anyone to try and. And um make that access in from that point.
Yeah, unfortunately, I just wanna make sure that that road going out wouldn't, cuz people will swoop from that other lane and try to come in through the back and we all know it. It, as long as it's set up so that it cannot come in through that direction.
Uh, yes, we worked with our traffic engineer, uh Killson on the design and um and uh it's a fairly standard way to. The discourage any type of movements of that nature.
Okay, and then you mentioned um that along the east side, uh storage of vehicles. I'd like you to elaborate on that, what kind of storage of vehicles are you talking?
By using the term storage, uh it's um a loose way of of. Referring to where members, um when they're waiting in line, will be able to stand. So no actual storage will occur of vehicles, um temporary or I mean, any kind of stationary storage, it's uh. All that areas is meant to be for um queuing for vehicles to be moving through. A safe place for um vehicles to be able to stop uh when they're waiting to get into the queuing area that um keeps them out of. The way of uh if it's in the easement area, uh vehicles using the easement and then once they're onsite, keeps them out of the way of uh the field truck.
So instead of storage, it's more people getting ready to get gas is what you're talking about?
I, yeah, I should have used the word.
Yeah, that that'd be way better, cuz when you said storage to vehicle, that hit me really wrong, cuz I have problems with that all over the city right now.
No, I I apologize for uh the terminology, but I can assure you that um vehicles will be moving through. In volume uh in the site and that's the intent of the design.
Got you, and will that, will that little road that goes through to La Salle still be open?
Yep, the, the road will still serve its current function, it won't be closed or anything like that. Some additional uh lane striping that Costco will provide on their parcel to direct vehicles into the queuing area from Auto Center though.
Okay. Um and then my last one is um. You guys state that there's nobody onsite and that's why you don't have a uh restroom, but yet you have workers onsite all day long, multiples of them. So I'm kinda confused is when it says that it is not a man site, but yet you say that there's several workers that are out and around doing their job there. If they have to go to the bathroom, they've gotta run clear back to Costco?
Yeah, so um first is, there's a slight distinction in um the phrasing of a manned versus unmanned. Facility. A manned or or a um attended facility is one where the attendant can control the um. The pumps through and control sales transactions, none of that will be occurring here because the attendant. Their, as I described earlier, their job is a lot more dynamic than simply sitting and waiting to approve purchases, so. We, but there will be a trained attendant onsite at all times and um. There's two plans for the restroom uh question, the first is that. There will be a restroom within the break room of the warehouse, which is across the street. That we've reviewed with staff and uh building official uh to um ensure that it's it's adequate for. Code-related purposes, but also um Costco will be uh finding a place. For a porta potty which uh will work with staff to incorporate into the design. Which will allow temporary relief for those instances when um maybe the.
So you're gonna build this beautiful thing and then put a outhouse on it?
It'll be a little more elegant than that, Costco um does uh take care of their properties and cares about the looks of it. So we'll be working with staff to um find an appropriate way to screen it. With uh some type of uh three-sided enclosure so that from the street, you won't be looking at just a blue outhouse. You know, a festival-style outhouse, it will be uh shielded from view from the street and other surrounding areas.
And why, why is it you guys don't wanna then just put in a bathroom there?
Uh, that relates back to um the issue of water access to the site, which uh currently. Is not allowed due to the moratorium on the peninsula for um installing new water meters, so that's. A key driver to that decision, again, one that we've worked very close with staff on. Essentially, as it stands right now, that sites, um we would not be able to get water access. And so we've had to carefully design the facility to um design out any uh water requirements and and that's one of them. So, yeah, that's the the short answer.
Okay, well, what I would like to see then is the, the structure for the outhouse as part of this drawing, so that we see what it is going to be. I mean, it's gonna be in our neighborhood forever, uh I don't know if you're a resident of Monterey or not, but I'm born and raised here as as well as most of our. Commissioners and stuff are here are um our residents of Seaside, so I would definitely like to see that. Uh as part of this whole thing, because I just don't see. Costco making their guys, especially when it's raining really hard, have to run all the way across the street, cross the, the intersection of four lanes. Wait for the traffic light and then shoot down, wait for the cars to go and then go off and down where the trucks pull in. I I just think that's a bit much, I would like to see that outhouse set up on there to start with so that we don't have workers having to run across the busy intersection. When they're having to uh have an emergency.
Understood, and again, this is um a discussion we've already been working with uh Rick and staff on. To incorporate before the facility was um before it's constructed, so it will be a part of the original design. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners, anything else for um? For the applicant or for the traffic?
Yeah, I I have one more thing. This, this is affiliated with Costco, I am a little concerned that people leaving Costco through that exit on yoga. They're gonna see the gas station there, but the only way they're gonna be able to get there is to drive quite a way away from. From Costco and then kind of turn around, and I'm wondering, have you thought about putting signs up to instruct people what they're gonna have to do to get to that gas station? As they leave the Costco lot.
That's a good question, related to the signage. There wasn't, there hasn't been a a thought necessarily to install signage, but part of the reason is that's um. There will be um sure information distributed within the warehouse, one nice aspect of um the facility being membership. Members learn very quick and they learn where the facility is and the best route for them to. Get to and from the facility as they incorporate that, um perhaps with their trip to the warehouse or otherwise. So as far as direction, uh directional or orientation goes, um we think that's. The the Costco members will learn very quick where it is, uh the canopy will certainly help as an indicator as well. To show where it is, as far as trips are concerned, um that's a question more for Amy Lopez. Who I might invite to to maybe say a couple of words on.
Sure, so what we've found is members often will make, uh they'll make their trip to the fuel station first. And complete that part of their shopping trip and then head over to the warehouse, not everyone, but many members make that choice. So our analysis has taken that into consideration based on what we've observed at uh many other Costco gas stations. Including those where the fuel station is located like this, just right across the street.
At the other location, I mean. I don't wanna go on about this, but this is kind of a hidden road to people that aren't intimately familiar with the auto mall, because you can't see that road. Auto Mall Parkway unless you're in it, uh so it's not gonna be obvious, some people, maybe people coming. Or Costco members from out of the area, how to access it, they'll see a road coming in, they won't be sure how to find that road.
I see what you mean, um and we've worked carefully on the way we've laid out this site to meet a range of needs. Both being sensitive to constraints that are within um within seaside's planning and. And transportation um uh requirements and also being sensitive to how we can maximize the use of the site. And additionally, as Sean mentioned before, he and I and others worked closely on determining the. The best path of travel boat into the site and out of the site that would meet the needs both of members who are coming to the site. That would allow for the greatest amount of um queuing area, as Sean was discussing earlier. And also would provide appropriate access for the fuel delivery truck, which needs to be able to make maneuvers. Into this site that are, you know, kind of larger turning movements than what we see with personal vehicles, even larger personal vehicles. And so all of those um factors plus others went into our consideration of how we laid out the site and where we are providing access. It is um advantageous to have the access be off the minor street since um that also. Provides members who are coming and going an opportunity to enter the public roadway. On a lower volume facility and then the traffic signal that's there serves as a meter. For the flow of traffic there on auto, um Auto Center or Auto Mall Parkway.
That answer your question, Mr. Dobson? Okay, anything else for staff, I mean for applicant or traffic?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I got a question.
Absolutely.
So what, what is the um, the purpose, the use of the controller enclosure?
The controller enclosure is um essentially a glorified storage hut for all the equipment uh required to operate the facility. As well as uh to track and monitor um the tank capacities and things like that. So it won't be an employee workspace, it's not um intended to be a break area or. An area where um employees can operate the dispensers, it's just where all the monitors, all the. Equipment required to operate the store.
Would you guys consider um enlarging that by several feet? And putting a placeholder in for a future bathroom when the moratorium is lifted and a water meter could be added?
You know, we had explored that with staff and um. At the time, it was uh. That was not an option that was going to work to plum out the facility um for future connection, so. The resolution we landed on was um the the one which is to install a porta potty with a screen fixture.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, commissioners? Okay, we will bring it back to commissioners at this point, um we will start with you, Mr. Evans.
They've, they've answered all my questions.
Okay, we will go on to um, well, Mr. Silva, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um look, I'm very supportive of the facility as a whole. Um I think that the chair raised really good question about the bathroom and um, uh you know, I would love to see. You not have it plumbed or anything else, but I'd love to see some space added to that so that a bathroom could be added one day down the road. Or even a condition that says if a water meter can be installed, that the um, that a bathroom would be added, I think it'd be better for your. Your employees, it'd be better for um the facility as a whole, and then I I would also state that. That I, again, willing to to give my approval to this, but I'd love to see the condition that that some sort of rendering be provided. That shows how the, the porta potty is going to be screened. Just so that we know that there's an attractive plan for that, or at least the um, the city council would see that.
Very good, okay, um, Mr. La Micah?
Yeah, the uh I have to agree with Commissioner Silva and also Chair Owens on the uh bathroom. You know, uh like Chair Owen said, that during the rainy season, that's gonna be a headache trying to rush over to the main facility.
Very good, is that it, Mr. Silva, Mr. La Micah? Very good, uh, Mr. Dobson?
I, I am a. In favor of this project, I do agree with the uh the comments that you totally made about. Giving us some more detailed plan about the porta potty that they're going to have on site. And I do have some misgivings, not enough to know, but some misgivings about the impact this is going to have on traffic. At least short term. I understand that there's some reasons why they decided to do it the way they did. And you can't have everything be perfect on a site like that, but I I do worry that. It could have a significant impact at certain times of the day on the Del Monte traffic.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Dodson, Mr. Spillamet, Spillum, huh, Michael?
Yeah, uh, I agree with my both commissioners and the chair in regards to the bathroom, I I believe um if we kind of. Sort of put a placeholder like Commissioner Silva said and and I keep this on um in mind. In my background, I follow a lot of the innovation and I do know there's technology that's being developed for a waterless uh bathroom facilities. Costco could be on the front line of that when it is available and all that and it's just an idea. And uh I do also have a question for staff that I just thought of is uh, is there, was there any uh feedback? From the surrounding neighbors, uh dealership, the hotels, uh that uh, you know, if any. In regards to the project, thank you.
No public comments been received by um through the email, the city clerk at C I dot seaside dot C A dot U S. No, not a single public comment been received and all the public notices were issued.
Very good. Okay, well, it comes back to me, I agree with all of my commissioners, I agree with Mr. Oh, did I miss somebody?
Mister.
Oh, Mr. Hun, I'm sorry, your picture's not up on my screen for some reason, I don't, I am so sorry. Go ahead, Danny.
Well, I think, I think the Costco gas station is a win-win for our city, I fully support the staff recommendation. And I believe uh, you know, this is capitalism competition, so I vote yes on the Costco gas station, so I'm all for it.
Thank you, Danny, I'm sorry I missed you, my bad, okay, then back to me. You know, there's several things we could do besides uh water toilets, there, there's composting. You know, there's several things we could do besides water toilets. There, there's composting toilets and everything else that look a lot better than an outhouse. And I agree with Mr. Silva that it would look much better if we just extended the hut that you have there for all the electronics and everything, to incorporate some kind of a composting toilet or something, just to give your workers relief. I don't see it as a good thing when it's raining to have somebody that really is having a problem and has to run across four lanes of traffic. And I'm afraid they'll try to sprint when they don't see a car or something, so that just brings in a safety issue for me, when we do have workers that are going to be at the site. And then I have something for staff, Rick.
I'm, I'm going to be unmuted right now.
You're what?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm unmuted, thank you.
Okay, Rick, I have a question for you. The, the road that runs through, that runs along BMW and separates that, that car lot that is going to become the gas station, then runs down by the quick lane and the motorcycle shop and stuff. Can we get that striped with all these cars that are going to be coming in through? Right now, you've got that hotel that built that weird fence out into the street, and now it's a real weird turn when you go through that. And by putting this gas station in there, you know that you're going to have people coming off La Salle onto that road to come to the gas station. I'd just like to see it, see some kind of striping down through there, so that everybody stays in their own lane.
Yes, that can be a condition, and what I was looking at where you would add any condition you had regarding the bathroom, and a condition such as you're talking on the striping, it could be added on the project-specific conditions, and that would be, you'd add a condition nine and ten, and then we would renumber the remaining conditions.
So nine and ten, so whoever makes a motion, we can go ahead and make the, make ours nine and ten as to what we're looking for.
Correct, the bathroom, the, the, the type of bathroom and screening, how it would come back to, it could come back to the commission prior to the issues of a building permit. You can word it in that, in, in that way, so it could proceed to the council for them to review the text amendments and the overall concept of the project. And then on the striping, you can add that as a condition that the striping would be, for the striping of the, of the travel lanes. And there also could be any reflectors needed for people approaching that point as they come from around that fence into the site in the evening.
Right, no, that would be very good. Okay, thank you, staff, did an excellent job. Alls I need is a Commissioner to make a motion. So anyone of you that wants to step forth, but I would like to see nine and ten installed there on my side, if that's what the rest of the Commissioners are in favor of also. Anybody?
I'm happy to make the motion. I didn't catch all the language, obviously, that you recommended for nine and ten. But with, and the nine and ten was both the, the striping in the bathroom, correct?
Correct, nine would be bathroom, ten could be striping.
Okay, so I, I move that, that we recommend to the city council that they adopt a mitigated negative declaration for text amendments to chapter seventeen of the Seaside Municipal Code, and a use permit, use permit application, UP twenty dash zero two zero for a service station project located on accessory parcel zero one one dash five two three dash zero one eight, with the added recommendations to city council that additional conditions be added at position nine and ten that reflect a desire for some street striping and a little better plan for the, the bathroom.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none opposed, the motion passes, a submit will be maybe submitted in writing. God, I'm forgetting this. A submit will be may, may be submitted in writing and be required by the filing fees within seven to the, seven calendar days of this meeting. You got your wish, so I doubt you'll want to do that, but.
I, I do have a question to the Chair.
Yes, sir.
In the motion, did you include the text amendments? I, I was, I was listening, and I was trying to see if you included a text amendment.
Yeah, he included the text amendments at the very beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was the three items, correct, Rick?
Uh, four.
Okay, I believe we got those all in there though, Rick. That's what we.
Okay, thank you, I was just, thank you.
Okay.
Rick, I read it verbatim from your, your recommended resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing that, reports from Commissioners? Anything? No? Reports from staff?
Uh, we have no reports this time.
Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, guys, good job.
Have a good week.
You too.
Take good care.
Very good. Okay, Leslie, anything you need from me?
No, I might touch base about getting signatures probably sometime in the next day or so, if that's okay.
Yeah, if you just call me and you're going to be the only one down there, I'll shoot down to City Hall and sign them for you.
Okay, that's perfect.
I'll, I'll just wear my mask and my gloves.
Mask too, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thanks. You guys have a good night.
You too, take care.
Bye-bye.